All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting. Order and start would be Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, let's start with making sure everybody knows, uh, sign in like we have people doing now. Make sure you sign in so the clerk notes you're here. When you do speak, please give your name so that the clerk notes who is speaking. Emergency access, we have one in this side corner, a one he came in. There is emergency lighting in case we have any issues. Please, um, turn your cell phones, your pagers, you know, there'll be pagers anymore, but, uh, your smartphones and any other electronic devices, please do vibrate so that we don't get interrupted. Um. Notice, uh, we'll be following the rules procedures adopted by this board at the last meeting. I don't have the date here, but the last meeting. And, uh, and we'll go from there. Next item up is approval of the minutes for the last board meeting. Everybody get a chance to review them. Any comments or concerns? I have a motion to approve the minutes. Seconded by Aaron. Any other comments? All the papers here in public saying aye. Aye, opposed. No opposed. So we have approval of minutes. Legal notices were published Wednesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-two. We follow the order of business, um, from the, uh, agenda that should still be some over there. Uh, first item up is a continued site plan, uh, PB zero-one-zero-three, that is twenty-two. Final site plan approval, phase three, and three enterprises, two-zero-four, appearance of the speed.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates. Here with me tonight is John McRoyce from McRoyce Builders. And, uh, I believe calling in online is Nick Jerome from M3 Enterprises. Um, at the last meeting, uh, we went over a bunch of the plan revisions, um, that we had discussed previously. Uh, we've made all the planning changes. We've submitted, uh, resubmitted plans. Um, just to recap, um, the major, um, plan changes um, that we've done, uh, with phase three is that we've eliminated the temporary turnarounds in the parking lot area to provide flow through the, through the parking fields, and we've also eliminated the six parking spaces on the north side of the building. We replaced that with foundation plantings and then, um, another tree in that area as well. Um, since then, uh, last week, we've also, uh, received a letter from MRB Associates or MRB Group. They've stated that we've addressed, um, or now that we've addressed all their planning comments, um, they've also approved the slip that we've submitted. Uh, MRB has also issued a letter stating that, um, a recommendation for the letter credit estimate for the project, which is also on the agenda for later tonight for this property. Um, the other things that we've done, and John can go over this as well, we've updated the building renderings, which now includes the updated north side of the building with the landscaping improvements and the removal of the parking spaces. Um, it also shows the rear of the building with the entry locations with awnings and corridors associated with each location as well. Um, and I'll turn it over to John now. Uh, we've also provided or brought some building material samples and colors for your review. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, that's, uh, kind of what this color board is, is kind of depicting. The front of the building will be of two, uh, two colors, so the stucco, I guess. Uh, the darker color will be the pronounced entrances where tenant signage or tenant entries should go. And then the lighter color would be the field, is uncommon, along the, uh, green side and then the north and the south side of the building. The, there will be a shoulder ice wings boat, uh, about two foot tall along the front of the building. That's what this material is depicting. And then the rear of the building will be a, uh, Omni Block bakery with a metal panel up of it. And that is what the two bottom panels are depicting. The glass will be standard bronze anodized and, um, uh, the roof is an exterior doors.
Oh, no, um, AC and stuff on top. Where, where's the, the AC units in that?
So there, there are, uh, not depicted on this plan, but there are rooftop corrals. So we've got them specified for if they drop.
All right. Anything else?
Those will be screened with that same panel that will be on there.
Okay. Anything else? Before we go to staff?
Nick covered it.
Okay. Mike, did you have anything before, uh, we go to staff?
I do not.
Okay. Ron?
Yeah, uh, we drafted a resolution with the conditions. Brian has submitted some changes that he caught that we missed. And I had no problem with revisions. They were sent to me yesterday.
Yep.
Um, the only thing I'm questioning tonight is the north end of the building. The drawing that we received earlier, that we took three trees there, and now I'm seeing only one.
Uh, this, this shows three. There's enough that's showing up.
It's just the.
It's just, uh, the way it printed probably isn't much, but it, it is showing up.
Okay. That's all I have.
And, yes, uh, we've worked closely with the applicant, uh, and then here for the applicant. Uh, worked through a lot of the concerns that the board had and staff had for the last meeting that they were at. And I do believe that this project's in a spot that, uh, staff feel fairly comfortable giving a recommendation to move forward.
Cool. Thank you.
Highway, Tim?
Highway is, uh, good.
Cool. Lance?
I guess as Ryan mentioned, MRB group did issue a comment letter. Uh, we reviewed it with our previous comments. All of our previous comments has been addressed. Uh, we did also approve the slip that was mentioned earlier as well. So I don't have anything additional.
Okay. Fire.
No, that's at this point.
At this point? Okay.
Are, are the occupancy set place or are they, are they just proposed?
One of the occupants, so we have medical use and they're targeted for the southern half of the building, approximately ten thousand square.
Well, I see medical. I'm just curious.
No, Mike, do you want to comment on the user?
So, uh, the user's taking, um, as of this point, with the possibility of adding square footage to what they currently signed a lease for, almost, um, they're a little over half, um, of the building now. We do believe based on some general conversation that they will be interested in taking more over time. My theory was to, you know, if I could fulfill at least half of this building, to go ahead and put up the entire building, the entire shell in which we believe it will certainly not only reduce my cost, but look better if you got a full building as opposed to half a building and should help draw even more attention, uh, whether it's the public eye driving by or my broker to see that activity's gone on. And, um, you know, hopefully can move this project along a lot faster with filling that building and the pads that are closer to three thirty-two. Um, but as of now, yes, there is a signed lease, um, for ten thousand square foot at the moment, and I do believe that it's quite probable that they will end up taking even more.
Any thoughts, Mike, on hazardous materials in that ten thousand square feet?
Any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who the.
This isn't specialized medicine.
It's not specialized.
Mainly doctors, you know.
Okay, so it's just going to be more patient care.
Yes.
Okay, that was what the fire chief wanted to know. Okay, um, turning to the board, right? Okay. Planning board, Tim?
Uh, I didn't know the answer this time. Doug? Um, no, I think everything that we had brought previously has been addressed.
Good, Adrian?
Um, I am good. Is that what they brought?
Cool. Aaron?
I'm good.
Okay, first I want to, I want to say thank you very much for working with staff and getting everything taken care of. I know we still have a resolution with a number of conditions. Uh, I agree with Ron that the conditions that, the changes that you made are fine. I don't have any issues with that. Uh, and I appreciate your work with staff and getting the majority of the key things taken care of. Yeah, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment about this, uh, the M3 Enterprise? Okay, anyone else online want to make any comments about this project before we, uh, move forward with the resolution?
Nope.
Okay, I assume, uh, Ryan, you're okay with the resolution with your changes?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody on the board okay with that? Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution with the changes to the conditions.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Hi.
Doug Beeks?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Adrian Bellis?
Hi.
All right. All right. Good to go. Thanks a lot. Thanks for working with us. Thanks, Mike. Have a good day.
Board members, thank you very much. Have a good evening. John and Ryan, thank you so much for being there.
Yeah, cool. Thanks.
Just one thing, the letter credit is on the agenda tonight. We're planning to recommend it down by next week. So we can get down to the construction meeting for March four, four.
Then we're talking in March, March four, the upcoming meeting.
Ryan, I believe you have a list for that to submit to me for scheduling.
Yes, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, big deal. Okay, next item up, there's a new public hearing. PB zero-two-zero-three, that's twenty-two, preliminary two-lot subdivision. Uh, David and Andrew Caps would like to share with us what's going on there.
Uh, I want to divide off, uh, the lot my house is on.
Identify yourself, please. Okay, Dave?
Uh, I want to divide up of the lot that my house is on.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, a little bit down the line, build another house. Uh, you know, our kids are growing up and several have left and we don't get a house that big anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And so we'd like to scale back and build one that's around that bigger lot.
Cool. Cool. Okay, um. Hey, turn it over to staff. Ron?
Yeah, we, we drafted a resolution with a lot of conditions.
Lot of conditions that you said you were right.
We felt needed to be added to the drawing. Uh, some of the things that were in that resolution, we could receive that today, a revised drawing, which we need to continue tonight.
Yep.
To give the public the opportunity to redo. And, uh, the only questions I have is I, I don't understand the, uh, the, some of the zoning references that were on the drawing. Uh, in particular, I don't understand the need for that twenty-seven foot.
As were a sliver of land or, yeah.
When it might better be part of the existing house so that if we need to expand the subject or onsite sanitary system, you've got room to do that.
Right, right. Um, yeah, typically, just so you know, typically when we do a two-lot subdivision like that, there aren't as many conditions. There were a lot of issues with this. Some of them were addressed certainly with the submission that came in yesterday, which is too late for the board to get a chance to look at them. We don't typically accept them that late, so. Um, so assuming the changes can be made and assuming you can work with staff on things, and we'll get it back on the next agenda that they can get it on, so. Uh, so I'll turn it, are you done, Ron? Turn it over to Dan. Dan's building department.
Yeah, Ron covered some of the same stuff, uh, for my department. Our zoning officer had multiple concerns. Uh, I know I had some concerns about this. Some of it went into conditions. Uh, but the recommendation would be to continue it. We did start to dive into what was submitted, uh, just yesterday, but, uh, still have some more questions out there. And the recommendation would be to continue and then working with staff and trying to get some of those figured out before your next meeting.
Right, and I guess the key would be is, I, would, would we be able to get it in for the next meeting? Um, are we gonna have to move to the second meeting in March?
That's, that's up to you guys.
Well, I don't care. I just know that there are some cutoffs and.
Well, it's, it's really up to the applicant too. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of conditions for, because of two lots.
Right.
So it might be, uh.
We'll get right on it and get these done.
Okay.
So I mean, that's, I, I would hate to just come back to your next meeting and say we need more time too. So I don't know. It's up to you. I hope you guys, you have good feels.
Let's plan on the next meeting and know what's the cutoff, Dan, for everything to be in.
You guys have everything Friday, next Wednesday?
Yeah, next Wednesday, so.
Next Wednesday.
Saturdays to.
So we gotta have everything in by next Wednesday. You get everything into my next Wednesday, everything's fine. Otherwise, we'll just end up continuing again at the next meeting.
Uh, Ron, this is what I just do. Usually when you have to do that, it's a requirement from us before that too.
Oh, absolutely. You're gonna have to sit down and have a meeting with staff to discuss the conditions and then, and I would recommend that to be done this week. So that you can meet with them, talk about it, and you, your, your team can go back and make the changes and make the management. Okay? So we're, we're planning on it, but like I said, if you're, it's not ready, it's not ready. So, okay, any other comments?
No, I can just set up that meeting, just help the building department.
Yeah.
On schedule, just as for Sarah, we'll call and, uh, she'll get on Ron's night schedule and we'll get it something figured out.
Soon, better. This week. Okay. Okay, um, Highway?
Um, yeah, um, driveways are gonna have to be, uh, brought up to spec.
Yeah.
That would be paved with the ten feet back. And, uh, level thirty feet and lightly spoken, and so the water doesn't flow, um, out into the road, so. Both those driveways will have to be.
Right.
And brought up, brought up the spec.
And I spoke driveway. That's the existing driveway. It grows and one on the new person.
But to keep the blacktop from breaking off.
And just so you know, we typically do that when people come in and we try to bring everything up to code. Uh, when people come in to make changes, the only time we get a chance to do it is literally to come in and make those changes.
Color of pipe under now, the new driveway. We'll make sure it's the same as what's under your existing driveway, the same size. Be required to have a pipe under there.
Okay. All right, Engineering?
Uh, yeah, MRB group did issue a letter. I, I think, just to be clear, some of the reasons for the continuation request, the fact that they're proposing lots that don't really meet some of the zoning criteria. So there's flexibility in the applicant to make those accommodations so that we have a plan that meets the zoning court criteria in order to move forward. So I think that's the hang up, really, on the conditions is it all comes back to the fact that you have a lot that doesn't, doesn't comply with code.
Um, which, which means, let me interpret what you just said. What he means is if you don't bring it up to code, then you're gonna have to go. If you want to keep it that way, then you gotta make another application to the zoning board of appeals to get relief from the zoning code.
I think a lot, I don't want to speak for code enforcement officer, Doug. I just know that lot size dimensions, I think they're, they're off. You don't have the minimum lot size criteria.
It has a standard near state separate.
But there's still zoning code that requires certain lot size.
Minimum lot size criteria. Again, I, I, I'm just pointing out, as the man we mentioned, there is some issues and I think that was one that was being brought up at the time. Whether that's still an issue, I have not seen the revised plan. I haven't been provided any new information. That stuff might have been resolved. But I think it was important at least to point out that the initial plan had some, had some items on it that had to be corrected in order to move forward, one which must be included.
Okay.
There were some questions on the driveway that we had. I believe the new plan from what I heard has addressed that. But if not, anisement might be needed to be provided if you're going to transfer through one lot to another lot. And then the last thing that I had was utilities, anisement utilities. I know that you showed the subject, but the connections and the water may need to be shown just so that we can verify that there's any conflicts there once the lot is something lighted off. That's what I have.
Okay. Fire. Okay, this is a public hearing. Do I have anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone here to speak for or against the application? Anyone online to speak for or against this application? Okay, we will continue this public hearing because it's a continuation of the, uh, of the project until, and that's me. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent convinced with everything going on. You're gonna be able to make it to the next meeting, but we got issues with that. Okay.
You know, just thinking about what Lance was saying and the subject, um, if you say it's the next meeting, it's a public hearing, so it has to go to the next meeting.
Right.
So, I, I don't know. I'm still very concerned with this on that time.
Let's move to the second meeting in March, which is what they.
I don't have a duty.
Huh?
For sixteen.
Saves tonight.
Yeah, maybe it's this month.
He's correct. Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen tomorrow. Okay. All right. All right. All right, Tim?
Um, I, the only question I have is do we do secret tonight or not?
Yes, I think we can do secret tonight. You've got speaker here. We can do secret tonight. Doug? Adrian? Aaron?
Uh, just, uh, the two buildings that, uh, are for, are going to be in lot two, they, they are permitted.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, so, work with staff as soon as you can. I still think there's a bunch of issues that need to be addressed, especially zoning issues. If there are zoning issues, we're gonna kick it down the road until ever that's all taken care of. So that's an issue, so. Um, so we'll move it to the sixteenth of March. So, first item up would be the state environmental quality review. Uh, we have a determination of significant resolution. It is a unlisted. We have the, um, part two. So, uh, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the secret, unlisted secret, and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Aaron. Any other comment? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Hi.
Doug Beeks?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Adrian Bellis?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we have a resolution with conditions for continuation of the public hearing and the preliminary two-lot subdivision. Um, and you should have a copy of the, uh, the, uh, resolution. I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution to the sixteenth of March. Which condition?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Hi.
Doug Beeks?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Adrian Bellis?
Hi.
And Adrian.
Hi. All right. You're good till the, uh, sixteenth of March. But work with staff as soon as you can and get those things taken care of. The updated drawings certainly help, but there's still questions on the updated drawing. That little sliver of land is a real question of why that's still there and then there's all kinds of issues. So work with staff, okay? Give a call and set up something. Thank you. Okay, next item up is a site plan, preliminary site plan. It is for Tom Rock. Who is good at talking to us about that one? All right. Did you get the name?
Jeremy Stanbys.
Jeremy, thank you.
Uh, let's give a quick overview of the project.
Okay. All right. Do me a favor and just flip that door closed, will you? And they continue to talk. Thank you. Make sure the people online, if there's anyone still left online, can hear. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead.
All right, let's give a quick overview of the project. Um, the intention is to, uh, install a new glass line processing system in the southeastern corner portion, interior part of the building. Um, and with that comes some exterior modifications that have to be implemented for to accommodate that relocation of glass line. So some things you'll see in the site plan. Um, we need to move, uh, the scale outward from the building, uh, move it, relocate it and upgrade it. And we also need to lay down some concrete in the area of disturbance in and around that area so that we're not, you know, tearing a blacktop if we can, you know, from here into maintain that surface level. Um, I think that's really the extent of the, you know, what we're trying to do and why. It's really just sort of that new, more modernized flash line system on the interior portion of that building.
Cool. Well, we like the concept, but as we said just earlier to the previous applicant, this gives us the opportunity to address some other issues that might be there and just bring things up. So let's step and start talking about that. Ron?
Yeah, I, I directed a couple of resolutions for you. One is secret, the other one is the condition of approval.
Yep.
And of it, in that condition of approval, have identified things that I think the planning board wants to see before final. Some of those are finalization of your operating plan that you have there, an understanding of where things are going to be and when not. Uh, some of the conditions go back to twenty years ago when the building was constructed and, uh, things have gotten kind of changed over the time and we need to go back and revisit that and make sure that we're consistent with what was approved, uh, back in the dark ages. Um, I, I think Tomra has been a good industry here in town. You couldn't have picked a more appropriate site. It's highly visible from the throughway, which is a concern to us with some of the issues that we have with the parking of vehicles and the debris and everything along the throughway. But we'll, we'll work those details out and we'll end up giving the code officer, uh, a plan that he can, you know, follow and administer as equal and continue to proceed with the growth and development. So I think that, you know, with that said, uh, we're ready to grant approval with conditions tonight. Um, and we'll work on the final details for final plan approval as well.
And Dan?
Yeah, I mean, Ron did something up very nicely. Uh, I, obviously for my department, we're, we're concerned with uh, some of maintenance and addressing some of the zoning complaints that we get about property maintenance and, and items like that. We also are concerned from the fire marshal's office that, um, just the internal or the, you know, when he's up at the fire inspections that everything's up to where it needs to be. And then of course, we look at stormwater and we're, we're concerned about the pond out back. It's like mentioned before at these meetings. Um, that we, we need to make sure we have a plan in place. We need to make sure we have easements. We need to make sure it's maintained. Uh, and we're looking at all the catch bases too, which go up to that pond. So something going into these catch patients, we need to make sure it isn't, uh, taking the pond to the bad addition. So, a lot of comments and concerns went to what was drafted for resolution. Um, I, I do feel good moving forward, but I do think that your maintenance plan still needs to be tweaked a little bit. It's a tremendous start and I think we're in the right direction. I know you guys have worked closely with us and that's an important factor too. So, um, with all that being said, I do feel comfortable with draft resolution, uh, that's been put together with staff comments. Uh, that's been presented to the point for.
Thank you. Highway, Tim?
Um, yeah, the road. Um, I know you guys have always plowed the road. We never had to plow the road. Um, my understanding was that road was originally put there for the land lot, the land behind there. But now I've been told that you have purchased that land and Tom now owns it. Is that correct? So, um, I do. I mean, we're the only ones that use that road. Nobody else has been used for it. I personally would like to ban it and give it back to them. But I guess there's probably other issues with that. That is.
Yeah, we don't abandon it, we need to put a turnaround.
You wanted us to go back to following, I don't know how you're talking.
Yeah, put a turn, yeah, you gotta put a hammerhead on it.
I personally don't, I mean, wanna do anything with that, if we could get somehow that road given back to you, that wouldn't be good.
I would say we certainly need to do that.
Okay.
Um, you'd be probably at double or even putting a turnaround on it. You know what I mean? Because this is a dedicated to our road, it's gotta have a hammerhead, you answer with plow around it, in case that would prevent the hammerhead to do it, so. Yeah, I think that's something you should work that out with staff, legal and all that.
Just a concern with that is if you go to abandon, we still need access for emergency services to get around to that for your building. So, I mean, we have to take those all into consideration.
Right.
I mean, there's a fire hydrant there that have to have easement for that.
So it's it's not just as easy as it sounds of, hey, how does it want to handle it?
It'll be more so, I don't know what your neighbors are like, if they believe what I understand happened to that road because of that.
Frank, our resident official, so.
Hey, Frank, you're high. Representing Tomer, I I think the speaking for a jury here at company, uh, we wanna come up with a solution that's that's best for everyone.
Yeah.
For both the town and for Tomer, so. Whatever that solution ends up being here is is you can work that out. Um, in in the coming weeks here to get to the, to the end goal here.
Sure.
Whatever that may be.
That's Ron.
You know, the issue of the road and the abandonment and whatnot, you know, that can occur later in life. Okay, right now you want final site plan approval. It's an existing road, um. We can, we can deal with that. Um, as we go forward.
I agree with that a hundred percent. What what's we get, what gives us idea of what's going on?
With my one point of condition on it, but there's a timeframe, so. Maybe by, before all your work is complete and we give you a certificate of compliance, the road issue has to be addressed so that we, you can get going on your project, but we still have time.
Right. Once we figure out what that is, one of the one of the conditions I can almost speak to the fire chief here is that no more parking of trailers on pavement. He's gotta have access back there by his trucks and and whatnot, so. I just and catch me if I'm wrong, well, well, you gotta, you gotta be able to get in there and have some kind of duty to be done. Right. Okay.
The 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 main issue with that is the property is so constrained, I think that's the problem. So, I I think that's it. At least my understanding here in way in here is that that's, that's a necessary part of the operation for all.
Yeah, the 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 issue that we have to try to figure out here is that that is, when we look at the property, we look at this a bunch of different ways at this point. That's where we squeeze trailers, the intent is not to park trailers there over a hang on like that, it's a stadium, so you have to put two doubles and you pull it out. It's the only straightaway we have back there. So, we can't really operate business um, without being able to squeeze trailers in that area, now that if that means, you know, moving them over to one side or the other and making sure there's always a clear path in and out, it can usually work.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I was very fond of.
Yeah, but I think we would have to be able to continue to squeeze down.
Right, and that's gotta be part of your operating procedure.
Sure.
Okay, and and work with Phil, the fire chief.
Okay.
Okay, so that we're not creating any hazards there that we don't, don't.
And it will be documented clearly of what you need to do there so the code guys can look at it and come over and go, okay, guys, you parked in the middle of the frigging road again. Move things over so we can keep. They have some teeth to keep things lined up and to help you help yourselves keep in line.
And and that would also include the number of trailers that you park there again.
Yeah.
Which so that we know that it doesn't run the back end to the front end.
Yeah, and we certainly don't wanna have any issues with not being able to address fire. Okay, anything else, Tim? Man?
Um, I guess just a big clarification on the roadway, so if we're gonna abandon it, whether that happens today or a year from now, the plans still show the hammerhead turnaround with a proper note to be added, that that gives us the possibility, because that can occur. That way we have a plan that does show the town road to enter the hammerhead, which makes up a legal plan from our standpoint.
Well. Quickly, if I'm wrong here, Tim, we've had some discussions and putting a hammerhead in, half of that hammerhead would be on adjacent property where unless there's an existing easement that we don't know about, uh, that's gonna be difficult to do. So we thought at the end of, with the south end of of Tomer Trail, there'd be a defined area of turnaround, turnaround, snowplows.
Yeah.
Um, and within that area, in the winter time, of course, uh, there wouldn't be clogged trailer park there. And I think that's something you can work with Tim on and.
Yeah. So at least for now, show it on the plans while we work out.
On the final drawings, yes.
And put whatever notes are necessarily needed for citing the potential of abandonment and therefore that concern with public. With that being said, my next point of clarity is because there is a hydrant back there, because the town doesn't have access for that, needs access to stormwater management facility in case of emergency, you're gonna need a cross access easement going over that that roadway to provide that um access, so that should also be identified on the plan. Again, we can work with you on how that looks, but basically I need access from the roadway to the facility and I would suggest that in terms of, in terms of, that way, remember the abandonment occurs, we have an easement in place, like this is that access, now to the the larger concern which is. Um. So we know that there's issues with the plan, it's been well documented, we've provided that there's issues, we just ask that as part of this application going forward, that they they document what those they've cited the concern, but we need a plan that shows what those remediation measures are going to be and then what the existing conditions are. So we asked for just for that report, just to be updated and reflects all of those things so that we know what the starting spot is and we know where we're heading up. All right, and then uh there are some calculations that we needed, but ultimately I think that can be worked out as part of the final process of this review, um. And then the rest of them are a little more technical, but I think also as a whole, everything else shown on the plan, we're fine.
Stormwater maintenance, so.
So yeah, that was the kind of thing. Um, so at the end of the day, the town has adopted a stormwater management form, that will be required of this application we provided back to us signed prior to issues of CFO, but then that'll be a condition going forward.
Okay, anything else? Fire.
Well, yeah. Eventually access, being able to get in there, obviously it's not, it's not two sixty.
Right.
You get back in there, you gotta get through the turnaround.
Right.
And the hydrant is in a spot where, you know, we can lay into the fire side of the hydrant connection, but that's access is, we have to wait for some of the goods off.
Right. Did I hear something about an issue with that hydrant and water sewer, or water having some issues with it back there?
Um, I did talk to Robin and when I talked to Robin, he mentioned they did go out and inspect it and it met the criteria. So I believe yeah, I believe we're good.
Okay. I remember hearing something, that's why you're bringing it up now.
Yeah, well, the only thing about the hydrant was we wanted some ballers.
Thank you, Rob.
Right, to protect it.
That's a condition.
That's pretty good. Okay, um. We'll start with Aaron. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, the one other uh issue, um, part of the operation is, is as we stated, it's very concerning. That.
Yeah.
The other um issue is there are some trailers, I think no more than two or three parts are operational. They're parked in the front. Um, and I know that what you said that, you know, we are on front edge and we wanna make sure that we're, you know, working to resolve that, but given the constraints of those two, three trailers, it's tough to find places anywhere else for those trailers. And also when it comes to snowplows and snow removal, having space to park two trailers sort of helps us to kind of move snow around as well. Um, so I didn't know how to, you know, spread that issue that that was something we would sort of need, or at least need to address, if you're not going to.
So are they permanent there just for some type of storage or are they?
Uh, my name is Mark Smith. I'm here at Tomer, um, just to correct during, yeah, they're not empty trailers that are parked up front, but what you're actually looking at are box trucks, box trucks and dump trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And on the railways, I think it was mentioned that uh that empty trailers were being parked up front. Any rare occurrence that there is empty trailer parked up front is mainly due to snow removal, um, snow removal that we have to uh move snow in our back lot and also some, you shuttle, shuffle some some equipment around. But mainly they they are box trucks and and dump trucks, the box trucks are very similar, well, we can come behind like a trail.
But are they? I wonder, how do I put this, are these vehicles that move and do things or are they?
They're not there specifically for storage.
They're moved around there.
Okay.
Around there.
Okay.
Possibly they're parked there. Uh, X amount of hours until the connection.
Okay. Because what we don't want is storage trailers there because you don't have enough storage inside. That's what we don't want to have.
So our storage is relatively.
Okay.
We have to look at some screening or something if they are going to keep trailer down.
Yeah, we'll have, yeah, we'll have to look at some of this, I strongly recommend that we have a meeting. Oh. That's gonna be my first recommendation when that comes to me. Aaron?
Um, a couple of things. Um, and I think it was, it was addressed already and it's in your packet here. Maintenance, so these lines either are, either are gonna be outside, correct? They're subject to the environment?
I don't know, the line is actually inside, what happened to the beneficiated glass in its final product is stored outside.
So.
So you have a conveyor that sort of comes through where the, with the beneficiated finalized product, sort of just evades it out and it's almost like a pile where then it's then loaded and shipped out.
Is there any point in that process where those glass is subject to outside and could break and cause debris on your concrete?
So, um, just to clarify, uh, this is all, which are such it's, um, so right now, um, they do there there's bunkers out on the back side of the facility and each of them are separated or segregated by the color type of glass, you know, your green, your amber, your clear. And that's where these um broken down pieces go to. They get stored in these containers with bunker and then they get loaded into uh the trailers that go off um, go off site. So the bunkers on the journey, concrete walls essentially, um, hold and it's key lined in their little placing, as I would say, so, um, those particles, they um leave right now, we currently operate with, we guys currently operate with them the way they are, um, and they are not breaking down, I guess it's a concern like the um, the pavement or the concrete underneath it.
My, 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 my concern is if if that 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 glass of that particle were to be outside, exposed to the weather, it could wash away down into uh, what do you wanna call it, what do you wanna call them, the storm?
Mm-hmm.
Storm basins?
Mm-hmm.
Catch basins?
The catch basins.
And I'd like to and I, originally I wanted to have some kind of screening or something to prevent that. Um, so that that's, we don't want that going to the, the town, but you have it right here, you're gonna be expecting you're usually expecting those quarterly?
Yes, I believe the catch basins currently have, um, socks in them to prevent the glass, you know, large particles of glass from getting into the actual storm cellar and the the um, the culverts and drains that are going out to the stormwater, um, in the basement. Um, additionally, um, the glass itself is not there for very long, um, usually when it's exported out of the building. It might only be there forty eight hours or so. Um. So, so there's that, um, or it's like the bunkers themselves have wing locks and stuff to help prevent that.
Okay. All right, that's, that's.
Okay.
Um, and then come fi- um now your final, you'd like to see up up front some landscape, you know, talk about s- screening out along the road, if you see some, some landscape.
Anything else, Aaron?
That's it.
Adrian?
Um, so with what Aaron brought up, the bunkers you got out back now that hold all your glass and stuff, are those still going to be there then? Um, because you have like three or four slots that hold all your material until it's done.
Sure, so. There's a lot of bunkers out there, I think what's gonna end up happening is you can reduce some of the bunkers on the west side, we don't do all those bunkers anymore. We're gonna be more consolidated downwards the building at this point. Um, and all the operations, the glass line bunkers, the new bunkers that are running here, um, the scale's gonna be a little bit, we're really trying to consolidate the glass operation right there. So the existing bunker will probably just stay for the time being, I think, to separate it. That glass line is an old glass line, so we're really not gonna be operating out of that, that only anymore. These are movable under blocks, so.
So in the long run, they have more space for trailers back there if you don't have those bunkers or whatever? And then is there a way to expand that road back farther so you have room to park trailers that you wanna tie up or no? I mean, by the maps, it looks like there is, I don't know, to extend it, so you have room to hook your doubles and triples or whatever that you're talking about or? So it's down back farther?
Stock, um, could we stage it further back?
Yeah, I think we could do that, right?
Like in terms of. Yeah, maybe fifty could save them further back.
So there'll be more of the driveways over to the south.
Yeah.
And out and insert. And then everything else has been somewhat addressed right now. I guess I've gotta figure out the trucks in the front still.
Okay.
I think I have been, I brought it all right, so I mean, I think what we'll have, what comes into the file, just work with that, or shoot some fire details and stuff, so.
Good. Tim?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, the resolution with conditions and the staff comments and the letter, MRB letter, uh, covers everything that I was considering, so.
Okay, thanks. All right, so here's what I just jotted down of the things that highlight things for me and I think for the outside maintenance plan is critical because that's going to tell us what you're gonna do for the duration of while you're doing what you're doing. And then that gives us, gives staff the ability to go in and ensure that you're following that plan so that that makes us happy. Because one of the things that always comes into an issue is we want you to keep it nice, you keep it nice for six months or a year and then all of a sudden it goes downhill and that's and we don't want that to happen. Second one is storage imbalance, we need to talk about that, we don't want them out front, I know the broken ones go out front, I know people pick them up, but we gotta come up with a cleaner way to do that. It's just not good. Uh, dust free surfaces, we require dust free surfaces, so hopefully as you look at the site areas that aren't dust free right now, we can make them dust free as a summer requirement, but standard for all the stuff that we do. Um. The, obviously the road that's between the town and you guys and I do it. But here's what I suggest, and I suggested this as an applicant for you, have a meeting, meet with staff, talk about the different things because the staff knows what we, our issues are, what we typically require, they know what's going on. When they're happy, when things come through and final, we can turn around and have a relatively short resolution with a few conditions and make it happen, make it go. Otherwise, we're gonna kick it down the road, we'll go through the process, we'll have a whole bunch of questions again and we'll keep going through this until we're happy, so if you work with staff, everything will go smooth, if you don't work with staff, it's not gonna be smooth, I'm just telling you the way it is. I've been doing this a couple of years, I know how it works. Okay, so what we have in. Okay, so what we have in front of us are two resolutions. First one is a secret resolution. Uh, this is a, what is it, Ron? Another unlisted?
I believe so.
Yes, another unlisted. But I have a motion to waive the reading of the secret re- resolution for our unlisted action and approve it as presented. So move by second. Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll, please.
This is Lucia.
Hi.
Doug Beat. Aaron Sweeney.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi.
Hi, okay. Secret taken care of. Next item up is a resolution that you saw. It has twenty conditions. You guys are okay with that at this point?
Yeah, just kind of a couple of issues that we spoke about, the hundred adjustments to those or is it, because things will get worked out, you know, with staff. How does that, how does that dovetail with those couple of conditions that might slightly change or not about?
So, for example, the parking vehicles in the front yard. If we can work out a operating procedure to address that issue so that we can change that at the final.
So it's addressed in final before our discussions.
Correct, yeah. Okay, so we have a resolution with conditions for preliminary safety plan approval. And I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented with conditions.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second of all.
Leader.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll, please.
This is Lucia.
Hi.
Doug Beat.
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi. All right, we're good to go. Work with staff, please. Please, please, that's, that's the way things go so much easier.
Just to clarify, so if we have a staff meeting, um, this, this week or early next week, um, will we, uh, and address everything that you, um, want in the preliminary and everything, um, the final city plan, um, what, when can we set that and, you know?
If I was guessing, probably second meeting in March. And you might be able to get everything in, including final in my next one there, which I don't think you can do. Uh, which as a matter of fact, I know you can't do. So earliest would probably be the second meeting in March.
They, they can't get that. Uh, so middle day is, uh, March tenth to be on your first in April.
Okay, so.
So that's where we're at.
Yes, and there's a lot of things to discuss with staff and issues and discussing the road and those kinds of things, but I think, uh, I think we got a good start.
So, uh, call the building department, talk to Sarah, and she'll get you on, uh, our schedule.
Okay? Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Okay, uh, next item up is other board actions. We have the NTOV, MSOD, which is gonna kick down the road to the second meeting in March. Um, anybody, nobody got a problem with that?
Sorry.
Okay?
Yeah, I like that.
Uh, I didn't think we were that boring. Have a good one.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next item, final letter of credit for American Equipment. We're good to go on to add everything taken care of. Signaled, delivered. Everybody here okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to win the reading and approve final letter of credit for American Equipment?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second of all.
Aaron.
Aaron, all, or? Clerk take a roll, please. No, just take a roll, please.
This is Lucia.
Hi.
Doug Beat.
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi. Okay, let's get the, uh, status letter of credit for Auburn Junction Phase Three sided approved. That's good to go to. Signed, sealed, delivered?
Yes.
We motion to approve the letter of credit to Auburn Junction and wait read. Aaron, second. Doug, any other comments? Clerk take a roll, please.
This is Lucia.
Hi.
Doug Beat.
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi. Okay, let's go to the board recommendations of Market Center. Let's go there real quick. It's never close.
Just like in college.
He's been doing this a long time, he knows.
Judy, McMonseal with Cost of Engineering. Here conceding on behalf of the Department of Commerce, Center, LIC, or the Market Center, Center of Zoning. This project, since before this board approximately two years ago, there was a recommendation to town board, uh, from the Center of Zoning. We were working through, uh, incentives and amenities, in particular the signalized intersection that was to, uh, occur at the eastern portion of our property. Um, since then, that signalized intersection has moved to the adjoining property to the east, the farming and realty, uh, project for Troy. And as a result of that, our plan has been modified, um, from what you saw a couple of years ago specifically to have moved the Canandaigua National Bank parcel, uh, we'll call it, which was originally at the eastern, uh, portion of the entrance to the plaza where it exists. All the way over now to the far eastern portion of the property where the signalized intersection of the fully property is. The Tops building kiosk shifted to the east, further away from the Fern Dairy intersection. Now on modern use, there was a restaurant, approximately forty-six hundred square foot, uh, restaurant use that was originally proposed where the Canandaigua National Bank is now, has now been relocated. That use has been removed from the project. Um, what it was replaced with was an approximately two thousand square foot, um, specialty drive-through use, which we've located where Canandaigua National Bank was originally going to go. And by the, the existing plaza entrance, the existing plaza entrance is to be converted to a lighting right out. The two tenant building, uh, with the drive-through at the intersection of Tensia and Ninety-Six was what was in the previous, uh, proposal. The Mavis fire facility located back away from roadway, uh, kind of adjacent to the existing Tops building. That was part of the previous plan. That hasn't changed. And then as we go counterclockwise, um, there was a eighteen thousand plus or minus square foot mixed-use office building that was proposed at the southeast corner. Even analyzing the uses that are proposed next door with the Freud and the office space unrest, it really didn't make sense for us to try to compete with that standpoint. That has been replaced with a future twenty-one thousand square foot plaza expansion with potential drive-through on the end. Um, since then, since we were here two years ago, you know, the, some of the stuff that we've talked about providing is now part of the, the overlay district, you know, as required, you know, the lighting and landscaping components, you know, so those are in, those are in here. There is sidewalk connection that's, you know, part of that that occurs onsite, um, as part of site plan that are requirements. But then there's off-site sidewalks above and beyond the main street overlay district. Um, we're bringing the sidewalk down from Tensia to the subdivision, uh, south of us. Um, that was on the plan at one point. It was off the plan. It's back incorporated into, uh, proposed. Um, when we were here a couple of years ago, there were, you know, items that the planning board had indicated that we would be looking for, you know, as this project has moved forward. I believe we've incorporated, you know, the first flush level, uh, and both, those items. We've made a sidewalk connection from the Tensia Road into Tops, you know, so we had a pedestrian access, you know, movement from there. We've made a sidewalk connection from the existing, uh, entrance on Ninety-Six back into Tops. We've included sidewalk connections from, you know, the Route Ninety-Six intersection, or not, sidewalk into the Canandaigua National Bank into, you know, the specialty drive-through and, you know, the connection for the two tenant occurs off of Tensia. Um, we didn't make a pedestrian connection to the field kiosk, you know. Didn't see that, but that portion makes sense. Well, we, we have had numerous staff discussions. We know that, you know, this is primarily, for lack of a better term, a sketch site plan at this point in time. And we move through town board incentive zoning and then preliminary overall and final for each one of the sites, you know, that will be, you know, additional detail. That, you know, and comments. Um, it's important to know, and one of the other things too is there's really no phasing of all of the Ninety-Six improvements from a street state standpoint, sidewalks, intended sidewalk. Um, there's been a lot of effort put in between ourselves and town staff. Those all are occurring upfront, you know. Um, so, you know, we don't have tenants for, you know, the specialty use drive-through building or the two tenant. However, that doesn't, you know, the frontage will be, you know, had this, you know, main street overlay district improvements. We also moved all the buildings to make sure they comply with that, you know, they're seventy feet off. The Canandaigua National Bank is eighty-two feet off, you know. We tried to make sure that we, you know, were consistent with what occurred next door. What occurred next door had originally actually during their approvals referenced, you know, the conceptual plans for our system. So there's consistency in that, the driveway locations being shown. There has been a preliminary conversation with staff and with the Canandaigua National Bank folks, you know, about potentially moving their internal driveway connection a little bit further away from the, um, dedicated roadway. And everybody is fine with that discussion, you know, I mean, we felt with the internal stacking in the site in the first place, there was enough, but you know, it, it's easy to, to address, you know. The conceptual discussion has been actually move that driveway and flip it with the stormwater management facility, put the stormwater closer, move it to the other side and kind of make a two-way on the western side of the building. We've had that dialogue with Canandaigua National Bank. It was a comment that was brought up, I think, as it was, as, as, as plan was reviewed, conceptual, with town staff, so. Um, it's fairly consistent with, you know, yeah, what we presented before. We've, uh, over the years tried to incorporate, you know, pretty much all accounts that we've seen so far.
And you still plan on Canandaigua National Bank and maybe being the first two?
Canandaigua National Bank, the Tops building two dollars and, and.
And make, and the, this will be the first. And the first one's up, okay.
Do the first thing. Canandaigua National Bank is definitely the first.
Chomping at the bit first.
If we had to separate, you know, uh, Mavis or whatever, you know.
Will those be subdivided off or?
Yeah, so from a finance, that's the only thing that is a change from before. Um, we are intending to actually do a physical subdivision of this for finance. You know, we'll, we will have reciprocal easy agreements to still operate from a part, you know, whatever standpoint. Single parcel, but it will allow us that, you know, Canandaigua National Bank takes out their construction loan and doesn't burden the rest of the, you know, doesn't burden.
So each one of those will be separated?
Yes, yeah. And they're, you know, they're indicated on their head, I think we've got seven lots.
Okay.
You know.
All gonna be part of the incentive, don't we?
It's all, yeah, yeah. That's part of the letter. There's a conceptual.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
Okay, no. All right, we'll turn it over to staff, Mike, and see what they got to say.
Well, the purpose tonight is just to introduce this.
Right.
Uh, we will during the next month prepare a report recommendation back to the town board on this. Um, there has been, as a result of the two-year process, uh, new regulations put in place that they are recognizing. Um, they're also recognizing the fact that it's important that we not have a number of driveway cuts on the Route Ninety-Six in this area, which they, they've done. And, uh, I think that, you know, we have a project here that can move forward, uh, to accomplish the goals that we're looking for in this area of the town. Uh, maybe supplying tweaking by the town board on some of the amenities that they're looking for. But, uh, we, we do have a detailed list now from the zoning officer of the, uh, incentives that are being sought. And there'll be a, a balancing, you know, between incentives and amenities. So, uh, that's all I have to say for tonight.
Okay, Dan?
All set.
Hi, Roy?
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm good.
Engineering?
I'm, I'm good as well, thank you.
All right. Okay, so before I go to this board, so we know, it, it's our job to ask some questions and then provide feedback to the town. The town board's responsibility to do the incentive donating and set up everything, including the incentives and amenities. That, that doesn't mean we can't suggest to the town board here needs additional incentives that we think the town board should consider. We can certainly do that, but that is certainly a town board issue and we can certainly do that. Um, other, so with that, I will turn it over and start with Aaron. Adrian?
Um, do you know if there will be any like, um, monument signs or anything on the roadway when this project's done or anything or?
Everybody's done, they're all done, total only allows us one.
One per building, right?
So that's, that is gonna be the question, and it might need to be put into the incentives for signage because the MSOD is very strict at this, so I think that the applicant should look at possibly including some sort of verbiage in the IZ to allow for, or he would have the standard codes for this. And, uh, barter pit seat variances, so.
Right, just as, I mean, my thought right now, just the one is, I don't want, I don't want like a each little parcel to have a sign out there. I really have one big main sign, even if it's towards the middle of everybody or whatever, sort of like Auburn Junction has where there's one sign there at the main intersection of the way. I know it won't be that far over because the road's on another property, but somewhere on this parcel that shows everybody, maybe catch it, what have you, but you know, it would be quicker for this one or less, but vice versa, but.
And the other question is signage on the buildings, I mean.
Well, and then right, right angles.
Where the building is, like if we look at Canandaigua National, I mean, they run a face two roads, so that would allow like two signs, but they might want something on the back side. But if you're inside the plaza or they got all four signs, I don't know, and, uh, it's definitely something that the applicant should consider as maybe part of the, the setting.
Oh, absolutely. You should definitely consider it as part of the setting. Because if you go and it gets thrown into the code, or you gotta go back and change instead of doing.
And the size besides, I mean.
Size, location, the whole thing.
I'm sure Mavis will want something. We'll work with town staff.
Yeah.
Since, since we don't have users, try for some of the uses, although conceptually rolling it all into incentive.
Correct.
I think in terms of, you know, and, again, you know, this is a iterative process, you know. I, I think establishing, you know, a, there's signage that says this is Market Center or whatever, and they're not, you know, or potentially listing key tenants, you know, and then but since I don't know who many, you know, who some of the users are locking into, you know, individual, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if we want even.
Size and location of the signs are what I would worry about. The actual signage, I understand. But if you don't, if you get that in there, size and locations, you're gonna be that much farther ahead because then you can actually tell your tenants as they come in. you're going to be that much farther ahead because then you can actually tell your tenants as they come in, here which are offered.
Yeah, and I want, we, we want to work with town staff to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not creating a situation where when somebody comes in and says, I want it on all four sides or, and it's not enough.
So again, we don't want to get into a situation with a variance, especially in IZ because we have to remember that doesn't go to our zoning board, they go back in front of the town.
Go in front of the town, yes.
Which is a little bit.
Change to the incentive.
Yeah, yeah, and that's definitely a different process and stuff.
Which depending on time, town board can change and there could be, I mean, so the more you get upfront, the better off you. Adrian.
Ken, we'll hear this this time.
All right, Doug.
They got, I've got a few things. What exactly is happening on the, on the east side of that bypass lane, that loop around with the cars or is that? I don't see something, but I guess what would be kind of that, they just need to have a.
Well, it's a drive, you know, you've got to have driver's side on the, you know, up against the building. So if you've got your, to the far east would be, you know, the stacking for the driver.
Oh, so that could be a driver.
That's, yeah, that, that's, that's a drive through. It's an end cap of possibility of a, you know.
So if, kind of, oh, yeah.
Taco Bell, some money, exactly, one of those guys says, hey, I want a, you know, an ancillary drive up, you know.
Sorry.
There was a way to do that.
I missed that part.
When we separated, no, but, you know, and then we separated, you know, the dumpster corral, the scrap area, you know, we, we didn't interconnect and make that.
Yep, that makes perfect sense, I just.
We always, you know, every time we put retail space like that, the number one question is, can I put a drive through on? So we will fit out, and well, could we make that?
Okay, all right, yeah, and that makes perfect sense, I just, you know, like post office drive through or something, that's a little bit, not extensive. Yeah, for restaurant and that. Um, the, the other stuff, I, you know, just, just looking at this, I guess, you know, go back to some of the discussing act tonight, bringing things up to, you know, the existence of, to the standards. I mean, there's all those existing islands out there and I think we're probably going to look for those to be more uniform with the new islands that you're going to be installing out there because right now they're just base asphalt out there, so, you know, that, that is something that I think.
They had some, we're told they had some sick trees and they cut them down and they new brought up.
Yeah, so, yeah. But as part of this, you know, as part of site plan, I think that's something we're going to look for a uniform, you know, to have a nice looking plaza out there.
Well, you, you can see, you know, we're trying to channelize and actually define those, so there really is a, you know, main traffic flow, you know, which doesn't take them across necessarily, only across the front of, you know, a busy grocery store.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I think ours wasn't quite operating, I just look at the ones again up by the building there, so.
Good point, we could, yeah.
Yeah, take a look at that and then make some notes on that. Again, that's, that's fine, I don't want to get myself.
No, but as you, as we.
Yeah, just to answer your heads up, you know, some of that. The other thing, I mean, based on the, the rendering, Mavis provided, I mean, that doesn't seem meshed with what Canada National really is. I mean, I've seen some other Mavis that, you know, have more of a peak roof and might, you know, fit better with the overall, you know, of these, you know, appearance of this plaza, you know, something like they invited one in Janusio, they had more of a, you know, architectural move to it. So this is a, so I think it might be something they built elsewhere that would be more appropriate maybe for this part. I'd watch, me send to you guidelines a little bit, so, I think that's all I have for now.
Cool, Tim.
Well, I, I was wondering about the exit to Vertencia Road on the west side. It's necessary because with, with increased traffic, that, that could be fairly dangerous. I mean, right now, people are crossing the burned area back and forth. If you're trying to get out of there, people turning off of Route ninety-six right on red, nobody stops on red. Usually they just turn off, so you couldn't be surprised very easily trying to get out of that road onto Vertencia if you were turning left. So I'm wondering if you even need that exit, because you'd have road through and around those tenant buildings, two tenant building. So I, I question whether or not you need that exit or if something could be done there to make it more safe with increased traffic, potentially increased traffic. So those are the questions I have.
And I know the conversations we've had numerous times of wish you would buy those other two frigging buildings, tear them down and put some, put the road back in the backside so you're further off of ninety-six, but certainly that's not happening at this time, but.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, yeah, I think that's, but again, that, maybe that's something we bring up to the town board for them to think about is they're doing the incentive zoning, do we really need that? I don't know.
Yeah, safer exit is where the traffic light will be.
Well, until the traffic light goes in, I think you really definitely, certainly I use it to serve, so I don't have to try to take a left out of tops.
Right, grocery stores is, you know, is a, is a neighborhood use as well. So if you come off Vertencia Road, you know, you're, you're making the, the subdivision itself.
Come up and around, yeah.
You know, you have to go out, go back versus, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think.
I think unless there's a payment, but.
Like when SRF looked at all this, you know, and they, and they looked at where the intersections were going or whatever, that there'll be an easing of, you know, some of the flood actually, potentially because you've got, you've got better, other alternate regress routes. So, you know, there has been some significant dialogue, you know, about Vertencia Road stacking distances, traffic. SRF has looked at, had a dialogue with town staff on Loomless, you know, we're happy to continue to look at, you know, my initial reaction to that is I'm somewhat concerned in that, you know, we're making pedestrian connections, we're doing certain things that can enhance the connectivity to residential folks to the south and eliminating that connection to Vertencia. Kind of, you know, it's counterintuitive to that in, in terms of, you know, the.
Well, it's easy to turn around the corner on to ninety-six and take that first entrance there, I mean, it wouldn't be missed really, I don't believe. If you're coming down, if you're coming down Vertencia Road.
Yeah.
Heading north, and if that road wasn't there, you go another, what, two hundred feet and hang a right?
Yeah, well, let's think about it as we get ready to give the town board some feedback and we can make that a feedback item for them that they should look at that closely and determine whether that is a needed event or needed requirement or not. You just let the town board, town board is going to make the final decision anyway, I'm with you, so. Anything else, Tim?
No, that's all.
Okay, um, my comments are pretty much, we've covered everything, we've seen this for two years. We've, you know, I, I do like the changes now that the road is over, gives you more room of space along ninety-six. You got to visit back to Canada National.
What are the retention contracts you're doing? Are those phased too, like phased in in certain areas of the two of them?
So being that it's kind of, they really don't have a good end on phasing of this, ultimately, any facilities that are required as part of that first phase, if they're doing subsequent phases with them, then yeah, they would have to be built, they're applying to the totality upfront so that we even calculated that though now. But if, but if there's separate pines, and each pine has its own drainage area, it's future phase, that could probably be built later on as part of the future phase. I hope that makes sense.
It is. We're, we're going to look at the overall utility of that and then connect and operate and kind of, there are certain places that may just go in.
Okay. Right.
Here's what it is, so if we find a tenant, all it means is we're coming in for final for a building.
Good.
So we're trying to do a lot of.
Okay, good. I'm going to ask the board to please pass your comments on this project to me and I will get them to staff so that they can go into a resolution that we will prepare to provide guidance, input to the town board for their incentive.
That is one other.
Okay.
I don't know if they will. When Canada, you know, builds a new branch, what, what is the plan for, like the drive-through inside the building?
Nobody will answer.
Oh, for, for the existing CNB?
Yes.
Facility?
Yes.
Is that going to remain or?
It's going to remain, but likely, we don't have two sides, yes, but, you know, typically when you've got a banking facility that gets dedicated by one bank, you know, somebody else will probably, you know.
Oh, okay. That's going to become a, a.
But that's what, you know, it's what, going into the plan, you'll see, they all, whether it's ATM or whatever, it's restricted.
Yeah.
So the intent is, you know, we're, we're leaving it there. If somebody came along and said, hey, I want to take that off, but we don't think that that's, you know, we, you guys have been dealing with this commercial quarter for as long as we have, you know, I mean, you know. I mean, I really. Retrofitting that.
I believe that was in our bank or whatever. Yeah, when they first came in, before the plans, it was, cops wanted the space somewhere, but, I mean, that probably could have changed by now too. But that's going to change over time.
They keep it as a drive-through, we've got to fix the potholes.
Okay, so get your comments to me, I'll pass them on to staff, we'll get a resolution, we're, Ron, when are we looking to have a resolution completed?
The town board asked for it since your second meeting in March.
Okay, so, the sooner the better, so we can get it back to staff for our second meeting in March.
So it goes to the town board for their second meeting, decision made with the town.
Cause our second meeting is before their second.
That's right.
Okay. Okay?
Just like this one.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we have next here? Can we have a letter credit for M thirty? Oh, okay, so that was Auburn Junction Phase three A.
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, all right, all right, I know I did it, I was. Uh. Mike, it's just hanging down, it's on a cord.
Ah. Drastically wrong.
Next, and next time, Ron, talk to us about the draft local law review on the agricultural, construction, equipment repair, painting operation.
Yeah, seven years, seven years ago, we had a gentleman, actually, who wanted to do repairs to agricultural equipment and construction equipment and including painting. And he's been operating the past seven years under temporary use permit branded by his only words of field and site plan included by this board. The temporary use permit regulations provide for maximum period of time of seven years. We can't figure out what we want in the way of prairie after seven years, which should be granted first place. So we drafted with code a proposal to amend chapter one sixty-five providing specialty use for the prairie which basically follows all of the temporary use permit conditions that are present as well as the allowing that kind of use in the general industrial and limited industrial districts should the need arise. You know, we have some sites out there on Loomless Road that maybe something like this might fit. We don't know, but it, it shouldn't be just excluded to the AAE or the RRAE district. The, we're not creating this just for one person, we can't be correct, but the individual that has been operating has had a pretty good report card and no identified concerns or things that we may have missed. So from your, your perspective as planning board, you know, grant a special use permit, I don't think in this one particular instance it's going to change to the site plan that you approved, so that's pretty much a straightforward, but I wanted you to know about this, I wanted to explain it to you because we do have some new members here on the planning board that may not have understood what was going on up there in the charts over.
I actually think I was part of the group that approved that first special use.
Temporary use.
Or temporary, yeah, yeah. Now, what's our schedule, Doug, do we owe the town board some feedback on that or just, it's just more information?
Okay, and I'm not looking for a resolution. If you found something in there that you think needs to be tweaked, let Dan or I know so that we can get that taken care of.
All right.
So it would have mattered that.
Always, I, I'm the general, Ron, the business. The equipment's usually, I'm going to say hidden, which is correct, which is fine, but the one building is like collapsing. So at some point, you tear that down or however it works, you know, and that's gone, then I don't know what's going to really hide the equipment.
Well, and when you read the local, or local law for the code, it says that it has to be screened with.
So maybe I have to put up a fence of some sort or a wall or something screened.
Or another building to keep it inside something, or I think was mentioned, or, or something to, or it's foolish, it's, I think it says foolish. So.
So, okay, so if that goes away, does something else have to be put in place to do this here?
If he's going to put anything on, yeah, or it all has to be done.
Okay, and like Ron said, obviously he's been, okay, we have any trouble with, with co-conditions or anything?
Okay, any else on this? Okay, we go to open discussion, Ron.
The only thing that I would add to this is the two local laws that we passed at the end of January, still have them. Secretary of State got the one on the solar moratorium and the other one was, I don't know, was reminding me.
It has not been filed?
Right.
Okay, because?
It was because New York State is not moving very fast these days here, so, you know, I'm going to not steal Dan's thunder, I'll let him talk on that. We did have a meeting this past week, staff, with the project over on the side of Hickory Rise. Two portions of the land over there back to Powers' property, that runs all the way from a portion of their property down to Route ninety-six. Second, come around to the town, incentive zoning project, residential, so the family for sale, detached. And that will be coming along for you guys to weigh in on the incentive zoning for that project.
But it does not include the Powers' land that backs up to Hickory Rise and.
There's a vacant parcel.
There's a vacant parcel, right.
And, and, and Powers, but the southern two-thirds of the Powers' property.
Correct.
Because Powers owns all the way.
To ninety-six.
Up to ninety-six, the front portion and the two homes.
Right.
That's not included.
Right. And that's the piece that actually is, is behind Hickory Rise and Tim Hill.
Yeah, but it's later, Doug, to talk about our meeting yesterday with Syracuse students on a project that.
Go ahead, Doug.
Doug, it's very instrumental on, that's all I have to know.
Yeah, so what it is, it's Syracuse University, they're a civil engineering program, they're, our monitoring. They have a capsule project as part of their graduation, it's a course that they're required to do. With my other job, what I do, I keep, you know, fun things, we, we have an actual alumni, that's how I got tied into this. Anyways, we present them projects or, you know, the regular projects or projects and they do conceptual design for that and come up with whatever, you know, the project might be, in, in this particular case, it's the land that we purchased or town purchased adjacent to the town park. So what they're going to be doing is looking at that, trying to come up with some ideas and concept plans for us for, you know, what we use that land for. You know, so walking trails, a level, they're discussed and so they'll, they'll work their way through it, they're planning to do a couple of site. You know, so walking trails, a whole lot of things are discussed and they'll, they'll work their way through it, they're planning to do a couple of site visits, um. I think usually around May is when they have their final presentation and you're invited and last year was on Zoom, so you can, you can jump on whenever they're there and give their final presentation. Um, with some good ideas.
Well, look forward to it. Any else, Ron?
No.
Dan?
All right, before I jump into what, uh, Ron was alluding to, uh, your next meeting on March second. You have a safe place storage, uh, for preliminary site plan and special use permit. Uh, as a reminder, they are in front of the ZBA.
Assuming, yeah, assuming they get the ZBA approval that they're asked.
Right, so this might be a continuation if they don't, because they might have to redo their site plan.
Right.
Uh, the next project would be the states of, uh, Bowerman, they're looking for a, uh, preliminary two lot subdivision. Very similar to the subdivision that we saw tonight, had a lot of questions by staff already. Uh, they were looking for preliminary and file on the same night, which can only be approved by the chairman. Uh, again, chairman asked us to look at this and see if there was concerns, which there was, quite a few concerns. So we only have scheduled them right now for preliminary to be in front of you. As, as staff's trying to work through this one, but again, uh.
And to talk about that, to read the way that I look at it is, if it's simple and we know that they've done their job and they've met most of the criteria. And it was just a few conditions and then a file, I don't have a problem filing a file. But in this case. It's not, so we won't, and my comment was. It can't get preliminary filing in the same meeting and you might not get preliminary in the same meeting if you don't get some of these things addressed and work with staff, so hopefully that.
That, and that message has been turned over to the applicant. Um, and they have been a little bit more receptive to working with staff, but they still have some ways to go. But at this point, they are on for your next meeting, um. So that's what we have on your next meeting, because you didn't end up continuing the other, the caps, two lot subdivision with sixteen, so. Um. Go back to what Ron started with, uh, solar, our more of our own for the town, I did on the pad. And we have already had inquiries about a solar project, uh, with no surprise, so, uh, we are. Uh, in the process of providing some information, uh, but it's just an inquiry at this point. So we're gonna see where that pans out to be, but, you know, before you know it, it might be in front of you guys, but we'll see. Uh, you guys are pros, so I'm, I'm not concerned with it, but.
Hope it takes less time than it was.
Um, and we have to remember that we're something like station about our last one, so. In any court, if judge rules, we could be held up on any projects again, so, uh, depending on what court comes out of it, so.
Is it a, is it a controversial location?
Um, no, so.
That was a bastard.
Somewhere down under the intersection of County Road forty-one and Vertencia.
So.
It's gotta be highway, rather than your meeting.
Um, so that, that one is, is in the works and, uh, I did talk to our friends from American Equipment. And they're looking to, I suppose, they're doing some research right now about adding on to their current building. And so that we have to come back to you guys with site plan as well, so, uh, they're talking about a four thousand square foot addition to their current building, so. Um.
How many is it really now? Well, it was part of the, they had, so carved out.
On their original, uh, we went back and did some research, on their original site plan that you guys approved, does show a proposed addition. And if you remember correctly, there was supposed to be a green area back in the building that they did a field change for. To make, make it parking lot because that's where the addition would be going. Uh, so it was on their original site plan when it was submitted to you guys, it's a proposed addition in that area.
But they still need to come back.
They still need to come in front of you guys for site plan and all that good stuff, so. Uh, I'm just telling you some of the stuff that's on the horizon. Uh, obviously Ron and I alluded to everything that's on the horizon. We've been in a lot of meetings this week for different projects. Uh, so again, as always, the town has a lot of people looking to do stuff here and I'm sure it's gonna keep you guys busy throughout the year.
This board will want to have staff input on how American Equipment is doing with all their existing requirements on their project. Whether or not that's all, if they pair it one way or the other.
Well, I, I think as tonight, when you, the final credit release for American Equipment, it's all pretty much wrapped up on their first project.
Wanted to make sure. All right, highway.
Um, did a little house cleaning this week, got some of the.
Got rid of some of that crap?
No, not that house cleaner, that house cleaner, I shouldn't say that. Uh, up at Phillips Landing, that host pond, we got.
Oh, yeah.
The cattails cleaned out of there. On, we got in, uh, from three thirty-two today and cleaned up and the candle shop, got that taken care of.
Are you hearing any feedback from the app, from the Belchover Belch Landing, is things better for them or?
I haven't heard of.
Okay.
So that's actually a good thing, although we don't hear from that, cause it's, it's working.
Not necessarily. They'll show up at the town board meeting, it's the first time you'll hear.
We checked the pipe, they're all open, they're first.
Okay.
So hopefully with this spring that's coming tomorrow, that's a ring coming, yeah.
Okay. Any else? Good. Engineering?
How much offer? We are working with the town, updating the site to sign the care, which is a current thing here, but we're trying to update our sidewalks to be. Um, meeting the state standard or exceeding it, in this case it'll be exceeding the state guilty standard. Uh, the town farmington, I believe, has an agreement with the state that says all sidewalks in the state right of way are owned and maintained by the town. Therefore, we're trying to eliminate the middle review that occurs on the back end of these projects between us and state. So we're working on it in detail, get their approval, hopefully they'll approve it and then we won't have to do the back and forth with them. Um, during construction of projects, it's a whole different set of protocols than what, what, what we're hoping to move forward with. Um, there's some lighting detail issues, uh, I think we resolved it, we're just gonna move the lights away and call it a day. Uh, we're working on that, uh, with staff, um, for both projects and then, um. Hopefully then we'll have a package to the town so that we can update the site, the criteria, begin moving in the next round of updates.
Okay, fire.
I open my mouth and you kick in the butt, so.
Be careful what the hell you're saying.
We had another fire up in Southwood, and sadly, you know, I don't know how much we've saved, but, you know, but it's always cold and visible. Plus, again, that's what, that's what we train to do and.
Okay.
I get the summer weather all the time, but we are praying for it, the warmer weather takes it a lot, takes it a lot easier.
Thorium media, the thorium media. Probably.
Just a tale on the chief's report, it's nice to hear that the highway department is out there cleaning all these drains and stuff, so maybe we'll get to a basis.
Yeah.
Oh man, I'm not looking for that. I'm not saying a word, cause.
Ron?
Just one more thing that we got to follow up on and that is checking with the DOT, cause it's been too long now since they had all the. Information for posting in the park and we're still getting targeted, targeted. So audio will follow up tomorrow and then.
All right.
Nothing on the sidewalk there?
Okay, um, from me, um, I actually, with staff tonight, talked a little bit about the, uh, project there. The ice cream shop and Airsaw moving some lights back. Um, from the state right of way off so that we can put in what we need to put in, get the rest and take care of. They'll still like this, the sidewalk, okay? Uh, so we're making a few minor little changes there, it's really a, it's a, it's a construction change, it's, it's. Field change type of thing, but they ran a fund, so. And the staff keeps me involved in some of these projects that are coming up and some of them are confidential and so we continue with that. So other than that, I don't have anything else. Uh, board have anything?
Uh, I do.
I'll go ahead too.
Just a question about the auto wash, the, Dan, you had a note, you said that the telephone pole needs to be removed.
There's a light that is on the telephone pole, that, there was a telephone pole that had to be removed, but there was also a light, a floodlight that was on the pole on ninety-six. That flooded back towards the exit of the auto wash. Uh, those were conditions that those had to be removed and they have been, that has been removed at this point.
Okay.
They were out there just the other day and were removed.
Great. They're expecting?
February, so.
Well, I think we're looking at March, uh, they're having some light pole issues as well, so, um, they're on back order.
That's the problem with the, you know.
So, but they, but they also, I mean, they, they still support it, so they were shooting for them, I'm worried that was the goal. Uh, but they're, they're a few weeks behind, so I think mid-March is when you'll probably see, uh, that hopefully up. Uh, Myers is the same situation, they're, they're looking for mid-March, uh, we're actually March fourth, doing a pre-CMO lock, um. But again, that's a tricky one too, because they had started the, uh, demolishing of the existing building. Almost the same time that we're giving a CMO, so. Uh, we just have to, they have to show regression and that building comes down before I can issue a CMO, so. I don't know what that exactly entails, but that's. So, they're gonna set up a office in RV, right? Well, yeah, I mean, a day or two, I think there's gonna be a transition and say, we'll never need this new building. Then we'll go out and do the CMO and they'll probably drive like a, something through the other building.
Can't say more than.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Crossed out this house down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're good. Anything else, Tim?
No.
Any else from the board? Don't we have Loomers Road project in March coming up?
Yes, sorry.
Is it first or second?
I wanna say it's the second one, well. It's the second one, so we're.
That's the, uh, and that made a continuation again.
I, I have, I have talked to the owners and told them, I stressed to them that I wanted to see some movement. And they were gonna try to work out at least on a special use permit, the site plan will probably be still continued. But if we could get one of the two moving.
I just remember there was something coming up with that, so it was just.
Yeah.
I, to be perfectly honest, so I don't know if we'll get to the point, five years, seven years, we could have, it'd be special, and might. Still be one more continuation till before we see, but we're fine, staff is working on that.
Cool. Anything else? Motion to adjourn by any and second of that done, in favor? All right.